I feel really, really good about it. I think that our team prepared itself really, really well throughout this couple of practices that we'd had. And I think that the rice turned out really well and our chicken and everything just kind of came together on the plate all at one time. So I feel really, really good about today.
Well, at first when I was driving here, I was really nervous, but then I got in there and I got around the other people and I realized that they were going to be going through the same thing as me. So I wasn't as nervous and then we started cooking and it was way more fun than I thought. So I was stressed that it was going to be stressful, but it really wasn't stressful.
I just, I like the competition. I'm all into competition. So I really, really like to just go out there and try and show that I can compete with people and show I'm the best, honestly. I just like to be really, really the best.
Step outside your comfort zone because that was way more fun and you get, you meet new people and cooking all together is fun.
I hereby call to order this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for November 22nd, 2016. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Present.
Mrs. Danick?
Here.
Mrs. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Mayhew?
Present.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Here.
Mr. Schulte?
Here.
I would note that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the room, behind the double doors, if anyone wants to take a look at those. And we have one set of minutes for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. Next, Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success. We have some good ones tonight. First, our student celebration this evening highlights the award-winning Lincoln Public Schools Sustainability Program and the recognition that our LPS students are often the foundation for many of our school's sustainability programs. In honor of the recent America Recycles Day, we feature our students who participate, organize, and support the many LPS recycling projects. Presenting this evening are Brittany Albin, the Sustainability Coordinator at LPS, and then we have members of the Sheridan Elementary School Green Team, Annika Srivastav, Grover Korn, Gibby Chapman, and Leighton Schmidt. Welcome all.
Hello, I'm Brittany Albin. I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for LPS and I'm here tonight to help introduce our Sheridan Green Team. But first, I want to give a quick background of some of the sustainability efforts happening all over the district. Our recycling program, which all schools participate in, will soon celebrate 20 million pounds of material that's been recycled since that program started in the late 90s. Our compost program, which 24 schools participate in, is currently diverting 4,500 pounds of food scraps from the landfill every school day. We have sustainability champions being designated at schools across the district and they're starting up green teams to raise awareness and reduce environmental impact at their schools. We also launched the Green Schools Recognition Program this year, which recognizes schools for completing a list of green activities and being recognized at the end of the year. And Sheridan Elementary has actually surpassed that first level of achievement within that new program just from first quarter alone. And that's due in large part to their Green Team and their fantastic sustainability champion, Levon Hamlin.
I feel like I'm the fortunate one because I get to work with such a great group of students. Representing our Green Team tonight are Gibby Chapman and Leighton Schmidt, who are 5th graders at Sheridan, Grover Korn, a 4th grader, and Annika Srivastav, a 3rd grader at Sheridan.
Sheridan's Green Team was formed to help increase recycling and raise environmental awareness at our school. This semester, our Green Team helped our school take part in Keep America Beautiful Recycling Bowl. We worked on projects in our outdoor classroom and made a video to promote recycling and composting at school and at home.
One of our team's most important duties is to promote recycling. Recycling extends the life of landfills, protects our resources, and reduces pollution and the need to use new materials. Each team member empties the blue recycling container with mixed office paper from our classrooms into a larger blue recycling container in the main hallway.
Our team also promotes composting. We collect used paper towels and tissues in our classrooms and empty our bin into a larger bin out in the hallway. Students also help compost food waste in the cafeteria during lunch.
We love our outdoor classroom and it gives students a chance to learn more about nature and have lessons outside along with getting fresh air. We also love to invite students, family, and friends to help on our Green Apple Day of Service to get ready for winter.
So thank you again to our Sheridan Green Team. And if you want to find out more, they actually put together a sustainability video for their school and that's just a preview of the content. We will be putting that up on the sustainability website, which can be found on the LPS homepage, just keyword search "sustainability." Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Thank you, Brittany, and thank you to all of our students not only for participating in this program, but for coming tonight and telling us about it. Appreciate that. All right, next item under Special Reports, Presentations, and Celebrations of Success, we have the Employee Recognition for 25 Years of Service. And let's start with Eric.
Okay. All right, members of the board, thank you. 25 years, quadricentennial, 300 months, generally accepted length of a generation, the average lifespan of a giraffe. Most importantly, most importantly, 25 years is a number of years that these fabulous dedicated employees have been with LPS, serving the Lincoln community. And so tonight, we are thrilled to bring forward to you recognition of employees across all of our employee groupings who have been with Lincoln Public Schools for 25 years. This evening could not be possible without the support of the American Legion Post III. We have joining us this evening Mr. Jack Seibert, who's going to come forward. Oh, there he is. He snuck up on me. Jack has so graciously joined us this evening and the Legion has just been a great supporter of the public schools, as you know. And we certainly appreciate their partnership in helping us recognize these fabulous employees. Thank you. So in a moment, we're going to have the employees come up and they're going to just tell you who they are, where they're at, and what they do for the district. And then we'll have a little progression here with Mr. Mayhew and Dr. Joel and Jack, and then we'll have them kind of head out this way. So without further ado, we present to you our 25-year veterans of Lincoln Public Schools. So if you can kind of line up here, our employees.
I'm Donnie Kilgore. I work for Nutrition Services. I'm a supervisor and I base out of here the district office.
I'm Kent Hoffert and I'm a 5th grade teacher for Beatty Elementary School.
My name is Ruth Beachley and I'm a 5th grade teacher at Maxi Elementary.
Angela Smale. I work at Charles Culler Middle School and I teach reading, grades 6 through 8.
Nancy Myers and I'm the Executive Secretary at Holmes Elementary.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Nankis. I'm at Arnold Elementary School and I do computer science.
Hi, I'm Rolanda Skirlock. I'm a para over at Lincoln High School. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Roxanne Peterson and I'm a sign language interpreter and I'm at Southeast High School.
Hi, I'm Sherri Harrington. I'm also a sign language interpreter at Southeast High School.
Diane Schneider. I teach 2nd grade at Lakeview Elementary.
I'm Barb Fitzgerald and I'm a coordinator and I've been with the behavior programs forever, but this year is my first year at LPSDO, so I office out of here.
Hello, I am Kelly Morehouse and I'm a resource teacher in the non-public program.
Hi, my name is Gail Butterfield. I'm an itinerant occupational therapist, serving babies all the way up to age 21.
Hello, I'm Peter Linz. I teach at Scott Middle School. I'm a 6th and 7th grade teacher.
I'm Bill Wendling. I work in operations. I'm an assistant building crafts, paint supervisor.
Hello, I'm Mark Patton. I'm in 5th grade social studies at Scott Middle School.
Good evening, I'm Brett Tolson. I'm the principal at Lincoln Southeast High School.
I'm Marge Thiel, the supervisor of health services and I'm here at the district office.
Good evening, I'm Dawn Wright. I'm the assistant principal at Campbell Elementary.
I'm Ralph Califf. I'm the associate principal at Lefler Middle School and been at Lefler Middle School for the last 19 years.
Russ Ewing, Director of Student Services here at Lincoln Public Schools.
Kate Paulson. I'm a teacher librarian at Lux Middle School. I'm Dave Nitsch and I'm the principal at Scott Middle School.
Good evening, Kathy Rungy-Wobig. With the exception of my first year, I've been at Randolph my entire time, most of it 3rd grade.
Rita Bennett, currently Lincoln Education Association, but also Southeast High School and the Entrepreneurship Focus Program.
Jay Lawson, General Store Superintendent Distribution Center.
I'm Kirk Lang. I'm Chief Technology Officer here at the district office.
Can I just say we should do five years so we could hear all the jobs? It's like, there's always a job I've never heard of. Amazing.
Just like to say, what a commitment to our district and to the children of Lincoln Public Schools. Thank you again to all of these dedicated people. All right, next, we have some friends here from the Launch Leadership Program. Jane, would you like to introduce us?
We have a couple of guests with us tonight from Launch and I'm going to turn it over to Lincoln Arneal and he can do some other introductions. Also, Jay Wilkinson is with us and we have some of our own LPS staff who participated in the Launch Program. This is a continuation from our last board meeting with some additional information.
Thank you, Jane. My name is Lincoln Arneal. I'm here on behalf of Launch Leadership. You heard from us a couple of weeks ago about our CLC program. That's one of our many programs. Tonight, we're here to talk to you about more about our organizational history, what we do, how we do it. And like Dr. Seibert mentioned, potential partnership between Lincoln Public Schools and Launch Leadership. So I address myself. I also have Megan Faunke and Jay Wilkinson here to present. So I will hand it off to Megan to get this started.
Hi, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of Launch. We're a nonprofit organization that works with middle and high school students to develop them as leaders and kind of motivate them, build a great foundation for them to go out into the world and create change. It's our mission to do this and hopefully they'll go back and change our schools, their communities, the organizations that they interact with, and hopefully the world. We have several services that we offer throughout the year. One of them is one-day workshops where we'll come into a school and work with a specific group of students on a skill that their advisor or their, whoever the leader of their group chooses. We do four to five of those a year, mainly in LPS high schools at this point. We haven't done any in middle school for a while. We have leadership retreats that are every other month and they have a main focus like motivation, networking, or service learning. And those draw students from all across the state and some are one days, one day of curriculum and we have a few that are overnight retreats. And then our biggest service is workshop, which is during the summer. We actually have it in Wayne State, Nebraska, at Wayne State College. And it's five days of launch-infused curriculum. The students work in small groups, get to know each other, and really motivate and drive each other to light a fire and go on and change the world. Launch is run completely by a volunteer staff that is from all over the country. These are some numbers we have of our interaction with Lincoln Public Schools students. And there's also a table with specific raw data on which schools we've worked with, how recently. And those numbers, if you enjoy looking at numbers. We've worked with all of the middle schools except for Dawes and this year we'll have Dawes at workshop because it's part of the grant. So that's really exciting for us. Back to our volunteer staff. I'm the volunteer executive director. We function all of our services completely with volunteer staff. We create, aid, everything, and put it on. We go all over the state. We've drifted into Kansas and Iowa occasionally to work with students there. Our staff is unique because most of us had, and it, Launch impacted our lives and we felt like we wanted to give back to the organization and help empower students like we were empowered when we were in school. We've got a few, our Launch LPS teacher section over here, which is great. And our, our staff is really diverse. We're anywhere from healthcare providers, educators, entrepreneurs, comedians. We just have a very unique group of volunteers, which really helps us empower our students from a unique perspective.
So we've been doing this for a while. The first Launch Workshop actually started in 1961, was started by Dr. John Lux, who hopefully his name you recognize, the name for middle school here. So he started a one-day program and it evolved from there, became a five-day summer workshop the next year, and we've been doing it ever since. So we date back to the 1960s. So we have a long history. Dr. Ron Jaikle was kind of another educational pillar in the state. He led us for many years and we've kind of grown. Sometime in the, in 1976, they kind of, we realized that rather than pay outside consultants to come in and run these workshops, that the best way to teach Nebraska's youth about leadership was to have Nebraskans do that. So in 1976, it became a fully volunteer organization and like Megan said, we get hundreds of people every year to go to our workshop. In fact, here's our staff from 1980-something. But if you look closely in the middle though, you'll see one Annie Mumgarth in that picture, right in the second row in the middle as a young Annie Mumgarth.
I was sitting here thinking, I couldn't remember if it was Launch or not.
Yes.
I was recruited when I was in college and I had a great time.
So Launch used to be known during this era and until a couple of years ago, it was run by the Nebraska Association of Student Council. So for a long time, our banner was operated under NASC. However, we realized that not just student council students need leadership development. So we became Launch Leadership and now we reach thousands of students each year with our leadership development. So how do we do it? We, so we've been around a long time. How do we do it? All of our curriculum was based on kind of a co-op, a small group of about 10 to 15 students who come from diverse backgrounds. Because we figured the best way to learn about leadership is from other people, from your peers. So we put them in a small group of people they don't know, they haven't met, and forced them to work together for the week. They get to work together. Sorry, not forced, they get to. So they, they learn from each other, they do activities, so they kind of start building connections and learning to work with people who aren't like them. So our philosophy is learned by doing it. It's experiential learning is kind of our, what we call it. So it's not just sitting here lecturing, this is what leadership is, this is what you need to do. We give the students a chance for hands-on leadership development and really kind of test out some things they may not feel they're good at, whether it's communicating, giving feedback, time management, things like that, or just talking to someone they don't know. I mean, so they get a chance to do that. It's not like learning, not by lecturing, they get to learn by doing. So it gets them out of their comfort zone and really gets them to take risks in a safe environment and that's where we see a lot of growth and a lot of development. So how do we do it? So for example, so it's kind of a two-step process. The first part, we give them that hands-on experience. So for example, for one activity, we'll put tape down on the floor and have the kids come and play human checkers. They're the checker pieces. They get to play the game of checkers against another group. They have to decide where they're moving as a, as a team and how, when to jump people and kind of their overall strategy. So that's kind of half of it too, but if we just played that, that'd be a game. But we don't do games, we do activities. So activities have a learning part of, a learning part of it. So just after the, after the active part of it, we sit around and we talk what just happened. We process is what we call processing. So this involves, so if you were talking about the human checkers game, how did it feel when you were jumped? Did you feel like you were making a sacrifice for the team? Did you feel better because your team got ahead because you had to take a step back? What was your vision as a team? Was that communicated between everyone in the group? So it's between that, that they learned some leadership concepts and then you take that back to imply to their real life. When do you make sacrifices within your student club or your group you're organized or involved in? And how does that kind of affect your leadership? So it's that learning process, it's a discussion where we as staffers ask questions, but it's the students who are providing the answers. So they learn from each other and they kind of have those lightbulb, those aha moments. That really makes the leadership idea sink in. So it's not us lecturing again, it's them that are doing it and that makes it stick to them and kind of have those life-changing moments and make the realization of that, hey, I did that on my own without any prompting, I am a leader, I can do that. So that's kind of our two-part philosophy. All of what we do is based on these seven skill tracks: communication, decision-making, group dynamics, interpersonal relations, organization, self-management, and values awareness. So every activity hits on at least one of these. Some of them kind of involve multiple ones. Group dynamics and decision-making often go into playing into that. So everything we do is based on this. So everything, an entire workshop, whether even you're given free time. Well, it's not free time, that's self-management. So they have to learn how to take care of themselves and kind of how they prioritize in their daily lives, even when they're not at workshop. It's called self-management. So everything we do is based on these seven skill tracks. And these seven have been around since we've started doing this. It's not something that we kind of change based on what we get feedback on. We found that these are tried and true and great ways to base leadership development on. So how we do it, another thing that we kind of do, we talked a lot about the fire. The fire is the inspiration, kind of the drive to do and make positive change in the world. So one of our big sayings is keep the fire. So we try to instill that fire within the students. So when they return home... So, when they return home to their schools, to their communities, they are able to instill that differences and kind of become that leader that the community needs, that their school needs, whether it's at a pep rally, whether it's at a fundraiser for their student council, whether it's on a sports team or on their speech and debate. What we teach them applies to whatever facet of their life they choose to apply themselves. So, the fire is how we kind of get that to pay forward and get that to carry on. So, I will hand off to Jay Wilkinson.
Hello, Board. Thank you for the invitation to be here today. I've been a member of the Launch volunteer staff for more than 30 years. This organization, I can absolutely unequivocally say, has impacted my life more than anything I've been involved with outside of my own family. When I was 15-years-old, I had the pleasure of attending my first-ever Launch Leadership Workshop. It was called NASC at the time, and it was in the timeframe band.
Was I your counselor?
I don't believe you were that year. It was a really magical experience, not because it wasn't Annie that was leading my group, but because the group of students that came together in our group, it just absolutely blew my mind. I was from the central Nebraska and farm and ranch country, and I grew up around a lot of people that were a lot like me. And I went to Workshop, and I met people of diverse backgrounds and race and religions, and the magic that happened by coming together with all these people under the guise of learning leadership changed my life forever. I remember when I was in the co-op setting with the group of students that I was assigned to, at the end of the week, we were kind of talking to each other about what are we going to do when we go back to our schools? How are we going to take what we've learned here and create impact? And I made a little pledge, which would seem like such a simple little thing at the time, and it was. It was a very simple, small step. I went back to my school the next year, and I made a little sign that said, "All students welcome," and I hung it right above one of the lunch tables in the lunchroom. And whenever students would come in, and I got a couple of friends to kind of assist me in this endeavor, and whenever someone would come in, we would go over and invite people to come sit with us at our lunch table, a very simple, simple thing. To this day, I still have people approach me, you know, 30-plus-years later, thanking me for that experience of these kids that were sitting by themselves in the lunchroom and being brought into a group like that. That's a tiny little thing, but it's a shining example of what Launch does. The greatest gift that I was given by Launch was it taught me servant leadership. It taught me what that means and what it is, and it gave me a lifelong goal to pursue that as an adult. So, fast forward all the way to August of 2015, last year. It was my 31st year, I believe, on staff, and over the previous 10 years here, we've celebrated our 50th anniversary as Launch. We've gone through a name change, and several of us on the Launch Foundation Board made a commitment that we wanted to lead this organization down a path where we could potentially leverage what we've learned into something remarkable, something that made deep and lasting impact on the people of our community and especially the students that we were there to serve. And so, we had kind of what I refer to as a coming-out event for Launch Leadership, because most people had never heard of us. Most people, you know, know someone who's attended, but they didn't really know what the organization is. We invited Dr. Joel and Dr. Stavam and Board President Don Mayhew to attend and join us for this event, to learn about what we were doing. And then shortly thereafter, we began having discussions about how we could take the vast curriculum that we've developed over the years. We literally have hundreds upon hundreds of activities that engage students in a really spectacular way. There's never a lecture but always a lesson, where you just truly are seeped in an activity where you learn by doing. We launched pilot projects at Dawes and Goodrich and North Star, and Alyssa Deal, who's an LPS teacher and a Launch staffer, and also an amazing human being, she's here today. She started teaching a leadership class at Sco Middle School. And what has happened and what we've seen happen has been beyond our wildest imagination, the things that we've seen take in flight, and we want to go deeper. So, earlier this year, the Woods Foundation announced that they're having this new initiative to provide what they call breakthrough grants that have multi-year funding. And so, among other areas of focus, they're focused in education. Education is something that they're deeply passionate about. So, we submitted a letter of intent early September, and we were chosen, one of the finalists, to submit a full proposal on January 15, and Woods will announce the recipients of their grant in May. And we know there are many, many worthy projects that are up for consideration with the Woods Breakthrough Grant, including some that impact LPS, but we really, truly believe what we have is something special and something worth really digging deep into today. So, what we're here for, a couple-fold, we want to educate the Board on who Launch is and what we're about, and we're inviting LPS to accept our invitation, to explore a partnership where we would work together to create a comprehensive leadership program that would be deeply integrated into the LPS curriculum, potentially even as a standalone program. The program would combine the foundational elements of leadership that we've developed at Launch over the, again, 50-plus-years we've been doing this, along with the 40 developmental assets for adolescents, which are, if you read through, they're in perfect harmony with the skill tracks that we talked about a moment ago when Lincoln was sharing that. And at the bottom line is that we believe that leadership is the framework and the scaffolding that makes it possible for a kid to achieve anything, and we would love for the opportunity to work with LPS to provide that foundation for our kids, and that's what we're seeking to make happen. So, we are applying for the grant through Woods on behalf of Launch Foundation. If we achieve the grant, then we would be able to bring together the labor. Right now, as Lincoln and Megan mentioned, we have over 150 volunteer staffers, staffers that are doing amazing things. The comedian that Megan mentioned was a writer for Seinfeld. He's been on stage. He came back this summer and spent an entire week dedicated to teaching our kids. He was there this summer. His name is Pat Hazel. He's been on Johnny Carson, he's been on Jay Leno, he's been all over the place, and there he is at Workshop every summer, helping our kids. The staff that are committed to this organization are amazing people. I count them among my mentors and my closest friends, and we are chomping at the bit for an opportunity to apply the knowledge and the education and everything that we've gained to try and make impact here at LPS. And I'll finish with this and open the floor if there are any questions that you'd like to ask. I've been involved in the Lincoln business community most of my adult life. I've been asked to head an initiative for Prosper Lincoln, for propelling Lincoln into a new decade where we're leaders in entrepreneurialship and innovation and doing some cool things. I've been in business and angel investing my entire career, worked in nonprofit organizations, including the founding of Nonprofit Hub downtown, and I will say without a question, the thing that I get more excited about than anything else every morning when I wake up is this right here, the opportunity to take this gift that was given to me when I was a young, you know, 15-year-old kid, and pay it forward to the students at LPS in a way that will create magic for decades, if not centuries to come. We're really excited about it. Any questions at all for us?
So, normally at this point, I would go last, but I'm going to go ahead and start tonight and first say, Connie Duncan and I just got back from a trip to China, where we were looking at their educational system, and one of the things that we heard over in Oregon was this concept of global leadership. And I think that if we, as a district, are going to continue to be competitive, not only in Nebraska and the United States, but on a world stage, I feel like there's a strong need for this kind of programming, and I think that it would dovetail great with something that there is a need for in our district. I also recognize that there is a need for us to have some process as a board, and so I'm going to look at my board colleagues as I say this. What I'd like to do is ask Dr. Joel to have his staff work with Jay and his staff to look into this proposal and then report back to the full board so that we can then have some more substantive conversation. And as I'm seeing heads nod, then, Dr. Joel, is that something that you can?
Absolutely.
All right, great. Are there any questions for Jay or his folks here tonight? Annie?
Where did you find that picture?
We have archives. Like Jay said, we have 400-some activities that are basically, we have lots and lots of photos and slides archived, too.
You might check 1997, I believe I was a student there.
Were you there? Fantastic.
See, there's an advantage to having a fire.
All right, Jay, Lincoln.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. All right, next, that brings us to public comment. I do not have any little blue cards, but is there anyone who wishes to address the Board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Barb?
I'm moved to approve this consent agenda. I've printed it in our book.
Thank you. Annie?
I'll second that.
Lanny?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all payments to the Nebraska Association of School Boards as part of Agenda Item 8.2.A as set forth in the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Kathy?
Out of abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all claims or payments to the Nebraska Association of School Boards or any subsidiaries or affiliates as part of Agenda Item 8.2.A as set forth in the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
Connie?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on all claims or payments to Nebraska Association of School Boards or any subsidiaries or affiliates as part of Agenda Item 8.2.A as set forth in the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I have signed and filed the recommended form, which reflects my intent and my vote on same. I vote in favor of the balance of consent items.
All right. Did I miss anybody? Seeing no others, Laura, would you please call the role?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to items for first reading. We'll start with Item 9.2.1, the Nebraska Department of Education Innovation Grant. Dr. Stavam?
This is an exciting opportunity that is brand-new this year from the Nebraska Department of Education. This is an innovation grant program, and you can see on there that the funds come from state lottery funds. It's about spurring innovation in schools, and so we've put together a project that really will impact all of our schools over time, but we're focusing mainly on middle schools. With the opening of Moore Middle School, we're going to start with coupling Moore and Goodrich together, and then kind of working out from there over a three-year process to be doing some professional development. It includes some items for equipment, it includes having the ability to have our administrators and some other district representatives travel to some places that are a few steps ahead of us and see some great examples, looking at schedules and course offerings to see where we might begin, looking at things a little bit differently. It also fits very well with the anticipation of the new science standards, which are much heavier in some things like engineering and STEM skills. And really, it comes at a nice time because there are lots of seeds really being sown all across our district with innovation. And the wonderful thing that we're seeing is we've deployed Chromebooks, and we've given people some of the initial tools, is the more we have them, the more we want to use them, and the more ideas people are coming up with, and really looking at how do we provide some really engaging opportunities for students that kind of go beyond some of the things that we've ever done. And so, this gets us started. It also allows us to have some sites right here in our own district for our own schools to come and visit, but also for schools across the state. And so, we look at this as something that gets us some starting places for some things we've wanted to do, but also begins that transformative work around mindset and around innovation and what that looks like for the future. I was going to have one other comment, and I lost it along the way there. But anyway, very exciting grant that's being offered by NDE.
Questions? Barb?
Will this have an evaluation component?
It does. We have a couple of components added to it. One is our own ESU can serve as an evaluator, and we have some benchmarks put in it. It's a little bit difficult because we have no students yet at Moore, and so we're looking at math and science also with scores, but as we get down the road, one of the things that we've been careful to do with our technology plan is to not equate having computers with raising achievement. We hope that the engagement factor does that and the solid instruction, and so we're focusing on some engagement pieces with this and looking at attendance and tardies and those kinds of things as well as we begin doing some of these things in our classrooms. So, we're pointing at a number of things. We also said that while we're already working with the District Management Council, that they may also have a role in doing a review of some of the work that we would be doing with this grant. So, we would kind of have two layers of review, and then, of course, we have to report to NDE on the progress of the grant. But those are the things that we've pointed to as specific things that we'll benchmark.
So, what you're proposing to do, are you basing this on any kind of evidence base, any track record by other districts across the country?
I would say that we're basing it on some of the examples that we've seen through the League of Innovative Schools, and instead of looking at as switching out of things, I would think of it as enhancement, like science and math, that we already feel like we have some pretty strong components, but this goes beyond what we're currently doing, kind of like we've begun doing with robotics and some of those things. It also gives more choices to students and allows some increased flexibility with what they might choose for electives and interest-based things, and then gives us the opportunity to go deeper. And so, if a student is working on a particular project, that we might have some new scheduling opportunities where they would be able to pursue some collaborative projects or multidisciplinary units. And so, I think there's a lot of things in it that makes what we're already doing even better and will lead us to some things that we don't even know yet. Some of the equipment funds that are in there, we've become more and more interested in video production and composition for students and having some of the equipment available. So, if you think about speaking and listening skills and writing, new ways for kids to show those skills are some enhancement kinds of things that I would point to.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, this will be back for a vote at our next meeting. Next is Item 9.2.2, the Woods Charitable Fund Breakthrough Initiative Grant. Dr. Stavam?
Yes, I've got to flip my page to the next thing. This is another grant proposal. This is working with some things that we've actually done already to one degree around bullying prevention and working with small groups of students. It's working with UNL as a partner, targeting Bullying Intervention Program, otherwise known as TBIP, and this concentrates on middle school and then expands into elementary and high school. We know this is something that we've already been doing in our district, but again, this adds kind of some enhancement to those existing programs and allows us to continue some work that's been very, very, I think, effective that we've seen already.
Questions? All right, we'll see this back at our next meeting then. Onto Item 9.2.3, State 21st Century Community Learning Center New Grant Application. John?
This is a 21st Century CLC grant. This is new funding for a new CLC at Campbell Elementary School. This will be our first new CLC in a few years and bring us up to 26 in our total number. It's come about because of the strong partnership we have with United Way on this grant and with other partners who would like to be involved in the CLC at Campbell Elementary School, and recognizes some incredibly good work by the staff and the parents and the students and Principal Lawler at Campbell to make this happen. Through the support and partnership with United Way and other partners, even when this grant begins to stair-step in year four, it will not require any general fund dollars from Lincoln Public Schools. It does add another CLC to our already-stretched leadership infrastructure, but we feel it's a great addition. There's strong leadership and wonderful partners in place. The grant's due in February, and we look to hear shortly after that.
Questions for John? Lanny?
Just one question. What's the free and reduced lunch rate at Campbell?
I don't know, but I will look that up. I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can look that up and let you know.
Other questions? All right, this will be back for action at our next meeting. Thanks, John. Next, we have our action items for tonight, and we'll start with Item 10.1.1, Policy 8400, Board Operating Procedures Meetings. Barb?
Yes, I want to move approval of 10.1.1, which is Policy 8400.
Is there a second? Matt?
I'll second that.
Discussion or questions? It seemed like it was a pretty straightforward change. All right, so with that, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next is Item 10.1.2, Policy 8410, Board Operating Procedures, Time and Place of Meetings. Barb?
Again, I'll move approval of 10.1.2, which is Policy 8410. If there are questions, John can help us out.
Is there a second? Annie?
I'll second that.
Discussion? Matt?
I'd like to amend the policy as it was originally considered last time. I've provided you guys a copy. It's actually now on the online version too. So I'd like to amend it to strike the line, the few words that label the exact website, the webpage, the exact webpage on there. So, I provided a copy for you guys.
So there's a motion to amend, and for the benefit of our colleagues, my understanding is that we did the original motion as it was, because that's what was presented at first reading at our last meeting, and that the Policy Committee is in agreement with this change. Is that all correct? Okay, so with that, there is a motion to amend on the floor. Is there a second? Barb?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there a discussion on the motion to amend?
I guess I would just add a couple things to that. The idea, this was a good catch that we had in Policy, just to, if the website were to change even slightly, we would be instantly out of policy, out of alignment with our policy. And so, rather than say the exact page on the website that someone could find, the verbiage now just says that it will be posted on the district website. And so, it's, I think, still very accessible, very easy to find. They do a great job of keeping our website looking nice, but it also mentions e-meetings, which again is sort of a product that we currently use, but may not. And so, it's just a good final cleaning up on this policy before we put it into our final policy.
And so then, just to be clear, looking at this, what we're talking about is that green text in the middle of the paragraph that's labeled "notification to the public", so that green area that's struck through?
Correct.
All right, any questions or comments on that? Laura, would you please call the roll on the motion to amend the policy?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Okay, the motion to amend has passed, and so now we are back to the original motion to approve this policy language with that amended language. Matt?
I would just, the main change that you see on here, it allows for us to be notified, us as board members, be notified electronically rather than just in paper, which again, puts this in alignment with our current practice. It doesn't change any current practice. So that's the main change that you see here, as well as it just, you know, adds that district website portion of notification to the public. So, those are the two main changes that we see in this policy.
Thanks, Matt. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, Laura, would you please call the roll on passing Policy 8410 as amended?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to Item 10.1.3, Series 2016 Bond Issue. Kathy?
I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Standish to talk about the bond.
Okay. This is giving us the parameters and the permission to issue the remaining $33,295,000 of the bond issued that was approved by voters in February 2014. And so, this completes that bond issue as far as issuing it all publicly, and we would like to go to sale here in December and report back to you on the results of that sale. And as this is second reading, I think at this point, we'd just be happy to answer any questions. Scott Keen is in the audience, as along with Jill Polly.
Lanny, and then Kathy?
Two questions. Does the bond resolution language limit the maximum interest rate that we would pay, and does it limit the maximum term?
It limits the term to five. The interest rate, Scott, come on up.
Welcome, Scott. Thanks for helping us out.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Good questions. The resolution limits the true interest cost of the financing to no more than 2.50%. And the final maturity is no later than January 31 of 2022. We currently expect the final maturity to be January 15 of 2021, but we decided to give ourselves some flexibility and in the eventual that might need it, extend it by a year. But we fully expect to have bonds amortized and paid off within four years and one month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy?
And I would move approval of the resolution as presented in your packet.
Lanny?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Other comments or questions on this? All right, I would just say that I think that this is a neat way to do this. I think this is something that is kind of new for us, going with a short term like this, but it makes complete sense to take advantage of this window, have this shorter-term bond, and I think it's going to result in a savings to taxpayers, which of course is keeping the eye on the prize for this type of thing while still allowing for us to take care of our bond-funded projects. So I think this is a very intelligent way to do this. I'm grateful to staff and the Finance Committee for putting it together this way. Seeing nothing else, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, we have Item 10.2.1, Moore Middle School Kitchen Equipment. Dr. Standish?
Yes, this is for second reading because it is above the threshold of 500,000, and it comes to you for approval. This follows our standard process for equipping schools as they open.
Lanny?
I would move approval of Item 10.2.1, the Moore Middle School Kitchen Equipment.
Kathy?
I would second that.
Discussion? Pretty non-controversial thing. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Did we miss somebody there?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us down to informational items, and we have a report from a board committee. Let's start with Annie.
Hi, well, I'd like to report from the Student Learning Committee, on which I serve with Ms. Duncan and Mr. Boswell. And just wanted to put out that the board, the Student Learning Committee has decided that what we're doing is taking kind of each kind of question or point of interest and looking at it a little bit more in-depth as opposed to looking at a variety of issues in a meeting, and we looked at early childhood education this past meeting. And just kind of giving an overall that, looking at the increase of early childhood needs, how we're meeting them now, how we're accredited. And really, we spent a good deal of time talking about, well, where do we want to be in the future, which I think is a really healthy conversation considering not knowing what the strat plan might bring, but knowing that we're looking at early childhood education, knowing that we need to really take a deep look at, you know, what is our mission and our goal, and just took some deep time looking at that. We'll be coming back in the early springtime with probably some more information to share with the whole board, but kind of that's what we're looking at now. And then, we're taking some of the ideas forward, as well as continuing to be looking towards in the next few bit time at the local schools.
Good. Thanks, Annie. Lanny?
Update from the Strategic Planning Committee. As of yesterday, when we met, 57 schools had completed their parent presentations,[1724.83]